Think we're ready to get called to order here. It is 7:05. And we have anyone who would volunteer to take minutes?
I'm a terrible taker.
I can do it.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you, Matt. And then bringing up the agenda here. Our first item on the agenda for this evening is approval of the minutes from September 10th, 2019.
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, a second.
So motion from John, second from Bill, all in favor?
What was the date on that?
September, September 10, 2019.
A long time ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was my last pre-pandemic birthday.
And it was October, November, then the Long Range Plan was approved and committee never got a chance to meet in 2020 before things went sideways. So, okay, the next item of business then after the approval of the minutes is selecting a committee chair.
I could still do it. But someone else wants to do it.
Will we have a contested election?
I'm okay.
I mean, usually there's such a clamor for these prestigious positions.
So I'll nominate John.
All in favor?
I, I.
All right, motion carries. John, you are the committee chair. Congratulations, sir.
Yeah, thanks. It was a hard fought campaign.
Was it in the millions? We reached seven digits?
You know, who knows, perhaps, perhaps, perhaps those sort of expenses are in our country's future for
There were three California school board positions recently that the candidate spent over a million dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
School board. And it wasn't even, it wasn't even local donations. It was
It's like packs.
Yeah, it was packs from like across the country that were contributing to these school board candidates.
Was that collectively or per campaign?
I think it was a three different candidates spent seven figures or more.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, I don't know what their competitors spent and if they won, but.
Yeah, that was a bit crazy.
It's already here. Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway.
So clearly some trustees need to get to work getting, getting, they're getting some of that sweet pack money.
Go on, John.
So, yeah. So another, number five here.
Yep. Is the reviewing of previous goals and establishment of new ones. Let me share over to that for you, John.
This is the 24-page document, right?
This is a one pager, I think. Is that the one?
This is the one pager.
Yeah.
Assuming I can. There we go. No, this is a, just this is the goal summary document. And in terms of recent goals, the Long Range Plan Committee doesn't look like had established any other than get a new long-range plan approved for a couple of years prior to last year.
I had, I had a question. In reading the the past plan, there's a reference to a long long-range steering team.
Yep.
Is that this group or is that a is that a larger group?
Was intended to be.
It seemed to be envisioning a larger group than just
Yes.
this committee.
Was intended to be a joint committee with representation from the trustees as well as from staff.
Okay.
Who would meet on a regular basis to steer the library's progress towards meeting the long-range plan goals set as well as to work to keep it an effective living document. The, the hope being that well, I mean, the, the reality with long-range planning right now being, being that generally things change so much that it's harder and harder to look out as far as we used to. Five years out in terms of planning right now is a real challenge. Even three is getting a bit hard with some aspects of service. And you know, the, the reaction that then being that, well, you know, you have this committee, they meet regularly, they not only keep you on task, but they evaluate when goals stop being relevant. As has hap, always happened sometimes with these documents and identifies new goals that fit within the, the target. The targets that have been set. So that new opportunities could be identified and plugged in.
So we never
As events happen.
That team then, right?
It never got a chance to meet. I was gathering together the group that was going to represent the, the staff and then you know, was one of the things that was gonna get moving that spring.
So that could be something on, on the, the to-do list, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that would be a good inclusion.
I didn't mean to interrupt, but.
No, 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 you're fine. You're good.
I saw the reference and I said, I'm not sure I remember setting that up.
No, we didn't get to it.
Okay.
You know, we expect things to to change a little bit in unexpected ways, but you never expect 2020. That's for sure.
Right.
Here, I'm going to share over to the Word doc version of this so that I can write on it. I think that long-range steering team, we'd hope to maybe find a member or two of the public that could join us at least on occasion.
That'd be great. I think that'd be great.
Yeah. It would be a useful perspective to
It also to be a way of recruiting trustees for the future.
That's very true. That's very true. And I know we have some other boards in the community that have already got kind of a setup like that in, in place where they've got they, they use their friends organization or foundation basically is kind of the minor leagues for, for the board. So worthwhile. Okay.
I had one more question before, then I'll stop interrupting.
Oh, you're fine.
It looked like we, we completed and approved a vision plan.
Yeah.
I missed that. So we got that done.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, that was
October of last year.
Yeah, fall last year.
Okay.
It's a good plan. You know, it's in terms of the values that, that it has that it lists, I think most, for the most part, they're things that are pretty obvious and hard to disagree with. But it's always nice to be able to have those things written down. That way you can hand them to people nice and easy. Okay. Any other questions before I jump into the other possible goals?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
And the only, sorry, Eric, the only other thing on that first one that you've written up is if we're, we're looking at members of the public to include them in that first one as well. Trustees and, and, and public.
Yeah. If we can, if we can find a couple of members of the public, that's love to give it, get them on there.
And I'm not just throwing this out, but I mean, like Tricia, we, we, we're talking about sort of developing ballpens and stuff. Would, would, would she be willing to?
You know, I don't know why she hadn't come to mind for me, but yeah, that would be, that'd be fantastic to get her on board if she's game.
Good idea.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
And I'm sorry, her name escapes me right now, but the woman we introduced at the last general board meeting. Would she be part of this process or could she?
Melissa.
Yeah.
You mean the involved in person?
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe.
Sure.
Have to take a look at that. Melissa is hired in a very specific position to, to lead the development of the campaign and I think for that reason, we just want to be careful when we assign you know, any other responsibilities that might take her away from that. But I think she would be a real contributor. She's, she's definitely impressed me so far.
Well, at the very least, she's, she should probably be kept informed of, of these initiatives, to the extent they dovetail or overlap with hers.
That's true. That's true. There certainly is a lot here that'll tie in with what she's working on.
You know, in my one meeting with her, she, she did have slight concern that the role would require more time than she was anticipating committing to the role. So
Yeah.
We might want to take it easy to begin with on what, you know, what we give her.
Yep.
Well, we can have her as a name on the back burner for now.
Hey, Eric, just in terms of the, the notes, so do I need to capture the specific verbiage here around these or can I just include our discussion points like adding members of the public to bullet one?
Um.
How complete do they need to be?
You could the formulating what I'm going to say. The, the lowest bar would, would just be something along the lines of that we discussed the long-range plan. Technically, legally, that would be all that you would need. Usually try and put in a little bit more detail than that because it's helpful for trustees going back and referencing the minutes and recording things, but just like what you said. You know, discussed adding members of the public.
Got it. Thank you.
You know, that's more than covers.
Perfect.
And yeah, just, just the and in terms of discussions, it's really just about thinking in terms of subject headings, just you know, what was discussed? You don't need to do a play-by-play.
Okay.
That would drive people crazy trying to take notes.
I'm not that fast a typer.
Okay. No worries. You know, we've, we've had in recent memory trustees that still handwrote the minutes. So you're in my, in my book still ahead of the game.
I've lost that skill. Or at least the penmanship.
Yeah. I don't think I could accurately take notes in a readable fashion the way I did in college. That's for sure.
No.
Okay. For other possible goals. You know, tying in with getting that long-range steering team set up would be evaluating and updating the, that strategic plan document. You know, we're, reality is post-COVID that we definitely need to review to make sure that the goals that we had set are still relevant post-pandemic. And you know, the, the flip side as well is that, you know, some of the landscape in, in terms of our balance between eBooks and physical materials. You know, with the, the way that we're offering programs, some of the opportunities that are there for programming, et cetera, is all changed and a bit in flux as well. So definitely need an evaluation and some changes made there.
Would the evaluation precede or, or come after the survey? It seems this survey could impact. You know what I'm saying?
I would anticipate a survey feeding into that evaluation. I think that would be part of the process.
Okay.
And that is actually what I had for the final goal here, which was coordinating with staff members on conducting either a biennial, that's the one every two years. Full-out, long survey or an intermediate patron satisfaction survey, something that would be smaller and more targeted.
Have we ever done a smaller survey or?
Yep. We've done those on a number of occasions. Most recently, I think August last year in 2020, we did a mid-pandemic survey to, to see what people thought of our curbside services and how we were doing.
So are you suggesting maybe a smaller survey post-pandemic just to kind of gauge the temperature, you know, what people are feeling about the library and then using
Yeah.
from that, you know, in the, the larger, I saw the recommendation that we bumped the survey to
Yep.
the bigger survey to next year.
Yeah. The jumping in on the, the recommendation then, and I will hop over to that. If I can. Or where is? I do not have too many tabs. I just want to make that clear.
While you're doing that, Eric, I'm a little confused. One thing with regard to what John said, I thought we agreed we were going to do the survey on the earlier side this year as opposed to around the back to school. Is that not where we settled last board meeting?
We had discussed. Well, we, we had discussed the, the value of doing a survey. And my recollection of where we had left the discussion was that we really needed to determine what sort of a survey it was going to be, whether we were going to do the, the two-year survey, the big one, or whether we were going to do something more intermediate. That was my recollection of where we had left the discussion.
Okay.
I don't know. Does, does that, John, Bill?
Yeah, I don't recall.
That match?
Yeah, no, I, I I think that's where we, we left it off. We, we were looking to see to try and do something between in the summer, not necessarily the full
Yeah.
action survey, but that. And I saw Martha's survey case document as well, sort of proposing to do the, the full one in 2022. The, the question would be, is there something that we could, we would want to do in the interim between now and September 1st? Because my understanding is that this is the sort of July, August is the best time to try and catch people on surveys, but at the same time, what, what do we want to get out of the survey in, in those, those couple of months? When we really haven't been at
Yeah.
capacity or for full.
And to, to get the, the survey out in, in August, September. You know, with a biennial survey as, as big as it is, there's a lot of lead-up that goes into that. We would have wanted to have been advertising it in the most recent newsletter that went out. So it would be, I don't think we could get the biennial survey out certainly early fall or end of summer, but we could probably maybe probably do that in winter. But that would be pretty late in terms of getting the feedback. I, I think the feedback that we would pull in would be more valuable if we got it in the summer. And you know, just generally a lot doing right now as, as well with getting services back into getting things back to regular with the remaining services that aren't there yet, big ones being programming.
So what?
But
What would be involved in getting a for lack of a better term, shorter survey out within the next couple of months? Is that a major project or?
Martha would be the one to, to answer that. Before I toss things over to Martha. Matt, you know, what's, what's your thinking then on in terms of the timing on the, on the survey? It sounds like you were had expected we were going to do the full one?
I, I wasn't clear. I, it was between the full and, and an abbreviated survey. It was more the timing that the kind of people getting inundated in the fall with back to school and sports and whatever else as opposed
Yeah.
There's some are going to lose some people obviously to travel, but I think in general, your, your response rate is going to be better in the summer.
I'd agree very much so. Martha, do you want to jump in then as far as what would go into a
Yeah.
intermediate survey?
So it kind of depends on what what kind of questions we want to ask and what, I guess, parameters of this, what, like what kind of what the parameters are. So for example, the, the mini survey that we did like mid-pandemic was very, it was all multiple choice. We left no like text fields where someone could be like, oh, this is what I think about such and such. So there wasn't like, it, it was all very automated as far as kind of compiling that data. So a survey like that is very, it would be pretty straightforward to get out. Basically, the process would be, we would need to decide what we wanted to ask. For marketing and such, I tend to, I, I think I'd mentioned that use the fall as the timeframe in the document largely because I just think in terms of the newsletter. So our next newsletter goes out September 1st. Or thereabouts. So it would if we were to launch the survey in either July or August, we would not get that initial boost from the newsletter. I mean, there are other avenues that we can pursue. We tend to lean pretty heavily on the newsletter for doing the bulk of our advertising because we have found from previous surveys that that's where people are getting the bulk of their information about the library and it also goes to every household in 60044s of code. So I don't know that I answered that question. That was kind of all over the place, but, and we would need to, you know, get it up on the website.
But Martha, did we advertise the one last summer that we did in the newsletter?
Not in the newsletter. Glenn at the Village is very helpful about when I've emailed him about like, can you put this thing from the library in the Village newsletter? And we got we usually get really good turnout from, from that. So that's an opportunity that we could look into. And we, we got pretty, I want to say around 300 something responses on that survey. So it's, it's not the end of the world if it's not in the newsletter. And certainly we can always run the submission period later and just the newsletter says like, hey, you know, we're doing this survey. Go to this website.
Is there, do you know when the Village newsletter is going out next?
Their newsletter goes out weekly on Fridays. So we've got multiple opportunities and usually Glenn has, when I've asked about it, he's usually included it in a couple of additions of that too.
And what do we need to give him? Just like a summary of what we're asking in a URL or?
Yeah, I usually just write up a short, hey, we're doing this and tell him you can edit it if he so desires.
Okay. Well, that might be a workaround and avoiding, we maybe if Glenn's agreeable and Martha's able to invest some time, we could get a few newsletter notices and try to supplant the library newsletter.
Yeah, I, I think based off of last year, you know, it seemed like we got a pretty good amount of responses with letting people know with those avenues. So
Yeah.
Would, would there be Probably value in catching a bit of August in terms of
Yeah.
Getting the news, news and survey out there. Bill?
So I was gonna say, what the as far as information we want to get from the interim survey, are there things again, in a bridge version of, of what the, the full one would be? Are there certain aspects that we'd like to, to learn? Whether people want us, are gonna, I think, is there going to be a group that's going to stay remote for quite a while? Are the, are, are people anxious to sort of get back to regular services? Would it, would we use the survey along those lines as opposed to the customer satisfaction part of it, which has been very over the last 16 months, as, as you put in your case study, Martha, it's, it's not a sort of giving you a good feel if, if people have sort of stopped using the library or, or don't know how to, to get into the eBooks. I mean, do we, do we, do we tailor the, the survey to be a little bit more specific for what we want to know at this timeframe instead of the full one? And does, does, will that, would that help? Would that help us? We don't want to create something just for the sake of creating it. If we get some meaningful data back from it, then we can, we can adjust before the, the following year.
I think one of the advantages of doing the shorter survey is, is that we can make those questions targeted to the situation right now. You know, looking looking towards how people feel in this particular situation, you know, I, I know we've got members of the community that, that still have plenty of COVID anxiety. You know, looking towards how people envision themselves using the library over the next six months. You know, do you, do you expect yourself to be using as mu, as many materials as you have the last year?
Yeah.
So those I think are relevant questions.
Yeah, sorry.
Right now, but maybe not as much. You know, as outside of this situation, but I interrupted you again, Bill. I'm sorry.
No, no, I was the, like, slight delays here and there. I, I guess one of the things I, I'd like to know is what, if, if we're seeing more, more of the trend going to, you know, electronic versus physical? And then how would that sort of change one with educating people to, to encouraging with some of the things that we have with some of the programs? Versus a physical side of things based on the data that we've been seeing. And, and obviously now that things are opening up, it might skew back the other way, but certainly that would be sort of important to know along with some of the things that we're doing with the technology group, the thing with the surveys with some of the other libraries as well to sort of, that, that might help us change maybe a few things on the, on the long-range plan on there. So I, again, if there, if, if, if we've got some goals and objectives, we want to get out of the survey for this particular timeframe. And then maybe a shorter version of that and, and using the e-newsletter of the village might be a way to, to gather information, maybe in end of July, beginning of August type, timeframe. But again, I'm not looking to create work. I'm just sort of, just, just that, that'd be something I think would be useful to know going into the year.
I agree, Bill. I think definitely. I agree, Bill. Um, I think definitely. Matt, John, uh, what are your thoughts as far as, um, you know, what are our most critical areas of coverage? In, in terms of getting, what do we want to be sure we ask um, in the survey?
I, I think my major question would be whether you know, it's, it's the whole pandemic question. Whether the, the um, imposition of the pandemic has changed their, their needs or their perceived needs of the library and if so, what are those? How would they, how would they explain, you know, what? I can't imagine that they're having, that it hasn't impacted perception and needs in some regard going forward.
That's a really good, that's a really good question, John. The way you worded that, I think writing that down.
I didn't write it down.
It recorded, so we can go back and
Yeah.
Do you again? But that, that, I, I, I agree with you.
Still saying the same thing, really.
Yeah, we could do it. You could have something on the thing to, on the survey to say how, how you would rate things before and after the pandemic so that um, you know, are, are you more likely to, to, to use electronic versus physical before and after, at least again, just to get an idea where people might be thinking and maybe it's maybe, you know, might be overthinking things, but at the same time it'll.
Yeah, my thoughts are we, we kind of use this as a, as a litmus test as opposed to um, you know, real chemical analysis. If that metaphor holds and, and, and kind of, you know, segment the, the questions. Um, I think like we're talking along the lines of, you know, how have you used a library and how has that changed? And do you see that persisting? And we can create dependencies within those groups. If people say it hasn't changed at all, great, we move on to the next question, right? And otherwise we give them some question, follow-up questions to dig in a little further. So I think it's how, how have you, what's your utilization been to, to John's point? Um, what do you need? Um, and then, and then potentially, you know, give us some open-ended feedback in terms of what have you, what do you want, you know, is have you seen other things at other libraries, you know, that whole vein? Let them do a little bit of the, the groundwork for us if they have it to offer. And keep it short and sweet, right? So we get, so we get high response rate. You know, ten questions or less is kind of a good rule of thumb. And I, who knows, right? Because our people might have a different affinity for the library and so they might be wanting to ask more questions. And so we can create those dependencies and if they're willing to share, we'll know that going forward too. Hey, gosh, a lot of people submitted thirty answers.
Yeah.
Unless we have that data, I don't, maybe I'm misspeaking, we might have it. I don't know. Yeah.
Um, I, I don't, I don't know how many, how lengthy people generally get in those, in the surveys. Um, Martha, you'd be the one to speak to that.
Well, and the patron satisfaction is going to be a little different vein, right? Because that's like your biannual, hey, this is our set the, you know, plan for the library. We want this to be more succinct. And, and more, you know, I think just give us a general sense as we're kind of thinking strategically about the long-range plan. We don't need to know, is it fiction versus literature or, you know, business books, whatever the other, you know, kind of getting into the weeds questions might be. That's my thought.
Yeah.
We could all, yeah, do we, I think we, I would, I don't, I don't want to assume anything, but would also be an opportunity to gauge their interest in programming areas that, that um, I know we have a very robust programming schedule, but there may be certain, you know, say like they want more children's programs or something. I'm just blue skying, but it'd be an opportunity to get their input on, on you know, areas of programming that um, they might want to see.
Yeah, and I think that falls under utilization. So we have that utilization segment. Has utilization changed? No? Okay, next questions. Do, do you partake in the programming? No? Okay, next questions. Yes? Okay, which programming? How has that changed? Are you comfortable with? You know, physical environments? Would you prefer online or the option for both, those types of things?
Yeah.
Yeah, and could be a good opportunity as well to gauge, you know, we, we saw in sometimes, some parts of the uh, of the calendar year that there were times a day when we saw more people attending programs with the virtual than we were used to seeing during in person. You know, it could be a good opportunity to, to gauge whether uh, you know, there really is some interest for some of that for, you know, some online programming, maybe a streaming addition to, to some of our regular programs where people would have the option, even if they weren't in person of attending remotely. You know, would that potentially be useful?
Well, engage that. You know, this begs another question I've had too, like those kits that we give out, at least for the children. Do, how, how do we get those materials? And I'm sorry, this is a little bit of a tangent, but it does fit in at least financially or?
There's a company that sells kits.
Okay, and do we buy them?
Yes, though I think most of the money is come from a friend's donation, Martha.
Are we talking about the backpacks, the sprout backpacks or the grab and go crafts?
Well, like, yeah, the grab and grow crafts most recently, the sprout, the sprout you make, okay.
The crafts we make.
And do we pay for those supplies? Okay, all right. Well, there's certainly some, I think some opportunities for maybe a, a, a corporate donation there. I, I have, we have some family friends that own a big office supply chain up, up the road here. You're all familiar with, I don't subscribe to their politics, but they're nice folks. You know, we could probably, I'm sure among all of us, we've got some outreach there. Anyway, it was just another thought I had. Sorry. Tangential, we got on programming and Luke, Luke brought home these seeds and dirt the other day and I was like, I hope Pascuazi sent those over.
Yeah, uh, usually we've been good partners with Pascuazi. They helped us get the, the seed library set up, but they've uh, I hope they're doing o- o- okay over there. They've been tough to reach so far this year.
Okay.
So I, I, I imagine like a lot of businesses, they've got a lot, a lot, a lot happening.
A lot, yeah, it is. And, and return, my wife is um, kind of interning there right now because she does not have a um, you know, a, a degree in horror culture as many of their staff do.
Yeah, they, they do good work over there and we've enjoyed partnering with them in the past and
Yeah, and I think there's maybe yeah, other opportunities like that. Sorry for the tangent.
No, that's uh, that's good. We're, we're always um, looking to make those connections. With you know, families, organizations, businesses in the area uh, where we can partner on things. Really, one of the ways that libraries work, um, I think the best is, is with that community involvement and where, you know, people are contributing to what's present and happening at the library as much as they're using it.
I, I just wonder sometimes if we need to be circumspect in terms of, you know, if it were Philip Morris or Brown Foreman, would we?
Yeah, there's we, yeah, we, we probably don't want to run out and get some tobacco money.
All right, hard liquor.
But uh, the you know, ninety-nine percent sure I know the, the family that you uh, mentioned earlier and they, they have donated um, at times in the past to support the library, so. You know, that, that, that could potentially be something there.
Yeah, okay, well, follow up.
But you know, you, you, you want to be careful of you know, associating yourself with, with someone that's, you know, has a completely black reputation, but at the same time it's, it's tough to avoid, you know, going out into community and avoiding anybody that has opinions.
Well, and of course people are entitled to that and as long as they're not, you know, like you said, black, so to speak, or maybe find a better adjective, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh. Uh, I'm recorded, uh.
Well, we did, yeah, I mean, we
No, what, what I, what I meant to say was reprehensible. But um,
Or even just, you know, yeah, I don't want to, we're over, we're over indexing here. I apologize. I just wanted to bring up the, yeah, this, the um,
No.
The, the contributions. Okay, sorry, guys.
But you know, and then the other key thing is just as long as whoever you're working with isn't trying to express their opinions through that donation.
Yeah.
You know, that's always
Yeah.
Are, are we, are we agreed on going forth with this interim survey?
Yeah. I think so.
Okay.
And if so, how, how best to create that?
So I, I'm happy to help here and I don't want to overstep, but um, uh, Martha, I know, you know, this is, this is an area you spearhead, so however, you know, I can help.
Yeah, I'm trying to think in the past, what we've done is um, and what will determine like what we want to ask and um, kind of break out possible questions. I can usually at some point I'll make a, um, a test form for the trustees to look at. It all kind of depends on, I, I mean, uh, my initial thought was I could try to draft some potential questions based on my notes and maybe send that on and see if I've captured the spirit of what uh, we want to ask or I, I, I don't know, I'm open to whatever process makes the most sense.
Well, and, and in fairness, do you have bandwidth for that? I, I mean?
Yeah.
This, it might be most efficient, uh, Martha, if uh, if you and Matt worked on the initial list of, of questions. Uh, maybe had a, a short meeting. Kind of calibrated your thinking and then put together a list. I lagged out there for a moment, so that might be about par for what you said. Is it? Okay.
Or Google Doc or something like that and we'll
Yeah, something like, yeah. Cause then, then we'd be starting out with some input from uh, you know, Martha, who usually spearheads things for the, the staff and uh, you know, Matt, who's you know, going to be helping out a lot from the, the board side and, and that should position us well to start out with something that's pretty close to where we need it to be for the final.
All right, so are we, uh, as a, as a committee, we are aligned on sort of wants, needs, utilization? And then subcategories within that and keep the survey at least without any, you know, contingent questions um, kind of ten or less or somewhere in that ballpark. It's an arbitrary number, but
Yeah.
Short and sweet.
No, I, I think you mentioned earlier, Matt, using it as a litmus test instead of trying to do the full analysis is right, just to help us make sure, you know, what, what we do in the next year satisfies kind of the majority of the patrons or the ones, you know, if they've got ideas and thoughts.
Yep.
Yep. I, I, I think our situation right now is kind of like we just got dropped out of a tornado. You know, and we kind of, we kind of know about where we are.
Yep.
But we need to figure out, you know, exactly where, where we are and what our next steps are going to be.
Well, and nothing looks the same.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, that's an aphorism, right? Change is constant.
Absolutely, yeah.
I was teasing.
So would that be circulated to us first or?
Yeah, so I, I think what we'll do, Martha and I can coordinate on a series of questions and, and categories and category, categories, topics within those categories, like we said, utilization is that, you know, um, circulation versus programming. And then questions associated with those and, and you know, that, that depending on workloads, that's something we can round relatively like in an interim basis, if we want to continue to have this dialogue.
Okay.
Does that work for everyone? Is that compliant with how we, yeah, okay. All right, so I, I think that's a plan forward. Martha, why don't we sync up and, and kind of set what's a reasonable timeline? And we'll build out, build out those um, categories, topics and, and questions to share that with the rest of the committee and um, in terms of our audience, like what do we have for an email list?
Um, we, I mean, we can certainly include it with our e-newsletter. I, the last time I checked, we were at around two thousand, it's just under, okay.
All right, and that's about the same as the last time we sent the survey last year, right?
Yes.
Okay, and from that, we got a couple hundred responses, right? Two hundred?
About uh, three hundred, I think.
Three hundred.
And I'm not sure how, how large the village's e-news audiences. But it seems very dedicated based on um, when they've helped us out in the past with that.
So just so I'm clear, um, the village, we, when we send the survey though, would only go to our patrons, not any who might overlap with the village newsletter, but we're not sending it to their audience, right?
Yeah, no, I, I would contact Glenn and he would put the, the link in, in there.
Just the notification. Okay, oh, so effectively, all right, it's kind of, all right, perfect. Okay, that makes sense. And then what do we use for a tool?
Um, well, we had used JotForm in the past, but now we have LibWizard, which is different. So it'll be, um, I'm sort of familiar with um, the, the backend of that, but um, it'll be an interesting. It's one of our first surveys with that. I guess we did the last one. It's been a while.
Well, our drive one will be live, right? Okay.
It's, it's, it's better uh, by a long shot, the JotForm, and once we got it, um, we're completely familiar with it. It's going to be a lot more efficient. It's just, you know, as inefficient as JotForm was, we were used to its inefficiencies. So.
Yeah, I took a glance at this. We meant, I remember this name now during the last board meeting, so that, yeah, it seemed like at least from advertised and what they were speaking to, it seemed like it was a fairly comprehensive tool.
Yeah.
Just, just one question, um, going this route, do we exclude any patrons? I, I'm just thinking of sort of more the older population that might not have be, be looking at e-newsletters and things like that. Is, is there a risk of that or?
We can certainly, we would put up like fires at the desk and usually whenever we do that, I try to um, remind desk staff to like, either we'll have like a little handout or say like, oh, hey, we're doing a survey when we're checking people out.
Okay.
We didn't, do we need to have things printed for that? Are they getting a survey if they want to do it manually or?
We can, we've usually had like a couple copies available at the desk um, for people to do and we can do that in-house.
Okay.
I think we're
What else do we got?
I think in terms of the survey then that we're ready to jump off on that.
Okay.
It's fun, it's exciting.
Other than that, to circle back around uh, to, to where we started here for our uh, for the goals that we were discussing initially. There we go. Do we, uh, does the committee feel pretty solid with, with those three goals?
Yeah, yeah, I do.
Okay.
Well, my only question with regard to this is the, John, when you and I spoke um, just independently, you know, we talked about sort of the the fundraising component of the long-range plan, does that go into this strategic plan document?
Yeah, and the fundraising has really, if, if um, shifted since the plan was originally drafted.
Right.
So yeah, we would have to um, update the, the plan based on the new goals and, and um,
And that'll probably, that'll come into kind of when we review the plan to, to where we're going, because
Yeah.
Well, and to the extent like what really struck me from that conversation was sort of the base building we needed to do. Um, and I'm wondering if in addition to wants, needs and utilization, we have one more last section that is very brief in terms of, are you interested in um, in supporting the library? Or contributing in, you know, in this planning in this committee? And just leave an open-ended for your name, name and email. And just leave an open ended for your name, name and email. What do you guys, what do you folks, everyone think?
I'm always open to including something like that, you know, because you never know. We, we have, we have very little real quality data on those that might be interested in supporting the campaign.
Okay.
We're kind of, you know, I don't want to say exactly flying blind, but it's pretty close to that. So yeah, anything we can do to identify people that might you know, want to help with the support, I'm all for.
Yeah, that, that was my takeaway that this really needed to be kind of grassroots and built from the base up. So maybe, you know, to the extent this is a 2,000 person survey, we'll
I, I would phrase it more like that would you want to support it, but learning more about the plans to support, you know? So it's, it's a little softer.
All right. Well, I'll defer to you on the wordsmith thing. How about that?
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay. So we've got three primary segments and a, a three A.
Yeah.
Captured in the notes.
Okay. So I think then we've covered establishing the, the goals for, for the next fiscal year. I will get the goal document updated to include the ones from the long range plan committee. That's the big document that has all the goals from the committees brought together. And yeah, then we'll get started on working on the survey.
Sounds good.
So do we have any other business, any other questions for the committee this evening? If not, then I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Now second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, meeting is adjourned.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Take care. Have a good evening.
Martha, I'll be in touch via email.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. Bye everyone.